Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April Business Meeting of the Macomb Park District Board of Commissioners. We will comment some on the unusual circumstances of this meeting. But first, we need to have it open by approving the agenda. Does anybody have a correction or addition to the agenda? All right, hearing none. If people would signify, and I think we're going to ask, in addition to the voice vote, if people would raise their hands so that Rachel can do the recording. So if everybody in favor would signify by saying aye and raise your hands at the same time.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda stands approved.
John, did we need to have a motion and a second first?
Yeah, we did. I'm out of practice.
That's okay.
I would like to move that.
Let's step back and ask for the motion. Is anybody going to make a motion?
I would like to move that we approve the agenda as published.
Is there a second then?
A second.
It moved and seconded, let's repeat it again. All in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now, we have the agenda approved. You'll note that the first item on the agenda is a little different. And that is some discussion of the proceedings by which we're going to have to operate. You are aware that the governor has issued stay-at-home orders. And as part of those, he has also issued a set of directions under Executive, Section 6 of Executive Order 2020-17. Section 6 specifically refers to the ability of organizations like ours to hold their meetings remotely so that we don't all have to be physically in the same place. And it also allows us to set up proceedings for handling public comments. Rachel, our Lenz, our Executive Director, has already issued a set of directions. Those are located on our webpage, which is macombparkdistrict.com, for anybody to consult. There are instructions there, and I am not going to go over them because they are lengthy. So if you do need them, get to them. However, the following things are irrelevant. We will post our agenda at macombparkdistrict.com/board-of-commissioners so you have access to it. There will be a Zoom connection available. Media can stay on that Zoom connection after the meeting if they want to do interviewing. Those people who want to publicly participate should contact us at the Zoom address that's published. Director Lenz will serve as the host for the meeting. And she will queue people, that is queue as in align, and then ask them to use the raise-your-hand feature that we were just discussing amongst ourselves in order. That person will then be able to address the meeting for the standard three minutes. All right? So going forward particularly, if you feel that you want to make a public comment, do get the agenda in a timely manner so that you have the appropriate address. You don't want to be like the mad Scrabble scene that the commissioners were having before we went on the air trying to figure it all out. And I was one of those, okay? Am I making this reasonably clear? This is going to explain why we're doing things the way we are. And it's mostly going to affect those people who would want to contribute. But we're going to also have to ask the commissioners for their forbearance because there is a tendency in settings like this accidentally to speak over each other. So visual queues. I have you all on my screen right now. But if I can get visual queues from you as when you would like to speak. Russ is starting there, good. That will help me sort of control the flow. Have you any questions, commissioners?
No.
Straightforward? All right. This is as new to all of us as it is to all of us, he says wisely. So with that said, we move to the first item of usual business, which is item number four on the agenda, consideration of and action on the minutes from the February, March meeting of the board. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from March?
They have not been sent. That has not changed from this afternoon.
I completely spaced that one off. Rachel?
That's okay.
We've run into a technical glitch associated with meeting format. Rachel has to rely on transcripts and, not on transcripts, on the video. And she does not yet completely have that video. What will happen will be that we will address those in tandem in May. Okay?
And I apologize. And I do have the video. Mark from UTV was able to get it to me this morning. But with the myriad of webinars that I had set up for today, I did not have the time to get them written. So I do apologize for that setback. I didn't realize until today that I hadn't written them because of everything else going on. It slipped my mind. My apologies.
I don't really think there's that much to apologize for, given the amount of time that was taken getting this rig for today and other things. So if that meets with the board's approval, we will move then to bills and transfers and monthly financial statements. Commissioner Hamm, you're on.
Thank you, Director Hamerway, Commissioner Hamerway. Anyway, on the consolidated fund for the cash on hand, the end of the month, we had $411,648. Overall, we ended the month $15,315 better than the budget. Year-to-date, it's $59,241 better than budget. Is that coming through okay to the commissioners?
Yes.
I want to make sure I don't speak too fast. General fund, we ended March with $219,284, cash on the hand. Overall, for the end of the month, this is $686 better than budget projections. For the year-to-date, we are better than $20,306 than expected. For the corporate count, we ended March with revenues $1,585 below the budget. The expenses for the month ran $3,801 below budget for them. And we ended the month $2,216 better than budget. Year-to-date, we ended $14,103 better than budget. And of course, the corporate count reflects refunds that had to be done this month for different rentals. Shelter, as an example, we are in the midst of having to go through cancellations of those kind of things. The recreation account, which involves ceramics and Lakeview programs, again, that's a revenue stream that is creating the revenue side of the budget for recreation to be lower than predicted by $4,459. The expenses for the month also ended below budget expectations, an amount of $3,886. So overall, $573 different than the budget. For year-to-date, we're still $4,690 better than the budget. For the Lakeview, we ended the month $80 below budget expectations. Year-to-date, we're $435 better. For Ball Four, year-to-date, $703 below what we expect. Special Rec for the overall accounts. Basically, I'll just give the year-to-date budget projections for $1,338 below. Police, the revenues ended on budget. The expenses ended $236 below expected numbers for the month. For year-to-date, we are at $850 better than the budget. Payroll, we ended the month $5,195 below the budget. Year-to-date is $18,938 below budget. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions for Commissioner?
Question from the audience?
Yeah, go ahead, Patrick.
Russell, could you give me the consolidated fund figure again, please?
Yes. Cash on hand at the end of the month is $411,648, some change.
Thank you very much.
And I will state that Patrick's on his cell phone, so he does not have the ability to raise his hand, so.
Not a problem.
Yeah, we'll let him pop in when needed.
If there are then no other questions or comments, can I hear a motion to approve the bills and transfers and monthly financial statements as published?
Aye, Commissioner Edwards, make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a second. We need a roll call though, please.
Commissioner Hemingway?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamm?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Gammage?
Aye.
The bills and transfers and monthly financial statements stand approved as published. And thank you, Russ. Do we have anybody that is registered for a public comment?
So for those who are on with us right now, if you are here to make a public comment, now would be the time to raise your hand. I did not have anybody pre-register for public comment. Again, I believe most people on here, they put WIU before their name. So I believe they're here for Megan. But anyone, go ahead and raise your hand for public comment.
Is it untied?
Thank you.
I have no hands, John.
All right.
Commissioner Hemingway?
That'll work either way. Then we move to item six, and I am filling in for President Weiss today. It is an important day in his family. One of his offspring is apparently turning 18. And so he has other duties there. I will not intrude on his prerogatives and will bounce it directly to the director.
Okay. I will try to make this as quick as possible. But in light of everything, to no surprise, there are some things to cover. So I'll start with the most obvious topic at hand is COVID and the updates with how the park district has been operating during this time. Right now, we're working on a skeleton crew. For the most part, majority of our staff can do their day-to-day operations from home. We do have four administrative staff who go on rotation to make sure daily operations gets done. So myself, our superintendent of support services, Neil Armstrong, business manager, Chris Brinkhauser, and then our office manager, Sharon Camp. The four of us go on rotation every other day, two at a time. It's my goal that we have no more than four people in the office at a time. Even though the maximum is 10 for the safety of the staff, we're trying to minimize as much contact as possible. So Jeff Hoyt is still on every day. He, you know, mowing grass doesn't put him at too much risk. But with that said, his staff are taking the same precautions as the rest of us. We are sanitizing mowers, equipment, tools, anything that the staff use does get sanitized after it is used. At the beginning of every day, those who are scheduled to come into the office get screened. We get our temperatures taken, even myself with a witness there to verify the temperature. If somebody's temperature is at or over 100, they will be sent home for the day until the temperature breaks. So, and we will encourage them to go get screened. That's something that is standard that I know that Western's doing, but also, you know, across the states, just precautionary measures. Obviously, from last time, we had mentioned that our programs and events had been canceled, all rentals. We are continuing that with the governor's extended stay-at-home order. Right now, we have ceased planning for programming through May. I know that the governor's order does not go through May. But it is our belief that it's going to take some time to reintroduce people and to make sure that we're not encouraging groups larger than 10 to 50. So we're making our focus a little bit later in the summer. And right now, we're spending a lot of time and energy on giving people activities and engagements to do within their own at-home family groups. We do have some activities in the park. And we always make sure to reference the CDC guidelines and social distancing and proper hygiene. So, you know, we know that these are tough times. We want to make sure people are still active and there's plenty for the kiddos to do and play. So if they don't, if people don't follow our Lakeview Nature Center page, Natalie Shelley's been doing a fantastic job of putting up, if I might say adorable photos of her daughter participating in the activities that she comes up with. So that's a resource for people. And then Erin, our event superintendent, and Whitney, our marketing guru, they have been doing a great job of making sure to keep the community engaged with our Facebook pages. I have to give a huge shout out to our friends at iParks. They are our risk management and insurance agency. As soon as they got word of COVID, they sent every agency that had contributed to them in the previous year and sent us back 10% of our previous year's contribution. Unfortunately, the crisis of COVID is just not covered in any insurance. It's just not something that happens. And to my understanding, it's something that would bankrupt insurance agencies, you know, should they choose to cover such a thing. So, but in good faith and knowing that park districts and special districts are going through a difficult time, they sent us all 10% of our previous year's contribution. So just another, just another point to why iParks has been such a great partner with us and providing us excellent service. I also need to give a shout out to Illinois Association of Park Districts, IPD, and Illinois Park and Rec Association, IPRA. I am overwhelmed with the amount of webinars and resources and daily updates. They are doing an excellent job of keeping our leadership in parks and recreation connected, giving us as much information and as many resources as they are getting and giving us ideas to think about, concepts to be, concepts to be thinking about for when we do eventually come out of the stay-at-home order. So I really appreciate their continued support, especially during a time like now where they're also just trying to figure everything out. But I'm still providing us with that support. We are implementing another layer of protection for our staff this week. I'm going to be encouraging staff to, when they enter into our buildings or when they're getting their temperature taken, to walk in with a mask on. It's impossible for us to keep that six-feet distance when we are exchanging the thermometer. So until they get to their own workspaces, until they get onto the whatever mower they're going to be using that day, whatever the case is, they will be encouraged to wear a mask or a face covering of any kind. That was something the governor did make mention of today. He says mask, but it could be any sort of face covering, just an extra layer of protection where you did a cough or sneeze that would stop whatever from getting all over everything. So, and in light of that, we are joining a statewide campaign. I think it's a national campaign, actually. I just heard about it in a state webinar called #ShowUsYourMask. So if you were on social media around 3:30 or 4:00 today, you saw a picture of myself, Natalie Shelley, and Chris Brinkhauser sporting our masks. I was saddened when I walked into City Hall today. I saw City Administrator Scott Koper, and he thought my mask was WWE. It's Wonder Woman, so I think I'm going to have to find new material. But, you know, we want to encourage everybody to have fun with their masks. You know, this doesn't have to make us all feel like it's a medical center. We want everybody to get creative and have some fun with it. So I would encourage commissioners, if you guys have masks, to send a picture of yourself sporting your mask to Whitney. Her email is marketing@macombparks.com. And be part of that campaign with us and encouraging the community just to take that extra step to protect themselves and others. With that said, with the impending nice, improving weather coming, I really need to stress to everybody, you know, when you're going to the parks, and we do encourage you to go into the parks, mental health is of the utmost importance always, but even more so right now. Please be prepared for no water fountains to be open, no bathrooms to be open. We just do not have the staffing to sanitize and sterilize them properly. So they are remaining closed, like many park districts throughout the state are doing. Please help us keep your children safe. The playgrounds are closed for a reason, by state order. But also, we just do not have the means to keep them sanitized. We had a couple of instances of parents cutting the zip ties of the snow fencing and allowing their children to play on the playground. They are closed. So we just ask that you please respect that. We are doing it for you and your children's safety. As you're enjoying the parks and the beautiful green spaces, please respect social distancing standards. And again, if you could, wear some sort of face covering when you're utilizing the trails or the sidewalks. You know, it's very difficult to keep six feet of distance on those narrow trails. So it will just help everybody stay safe. We are working on a new engagement for the community. Very excited this is going to be released on Monday, but you heard it here first. Natalie and Erin and Whitney have been working on Happy-at-Home kits. These are going to be activity kits where there are six activities per day for five days for 30 days. So it is, however, whatever math that is, six times five times 30, we're going to provide these options for you. They include science activities, outdoor activities, indoor activities, a virtual field trip, and something else. But these kits are only $7. We wanted to keep it within the same realm of what our family workshops are, even though the workshops are only, you know, for an hour and a half one day. This is, you know, a whole month worth of activity. So for the month of May, we wanted to help parents who have little ones at home and give them something to engage their youth with. So we will, for seven bucks, bring this to you. We'll drop it off, no contact. We'll leave it on your doorstep or wherever you let us know to leave it. But again, just another way to help spend some time with family during this time. We continue to plan for the future, giving the community something to look forward to. So our ceramics studio expansion is going extremely well. I get regular, all capitalized text messages from Natalie with her excitement, the progress being made. We're really, really happy to have a unique space for the community to come in and make their awesome creative inventions through ceramics with Natalie. So that is almost complete. The apiary at Lakeview is seeing some progress. The fence has been put up, so I believe we'll start to see beehives out there soon. Another thing for the community to look forward to. And we are constantly looking for and chasing after new grants for new park amenities, new program offerings. We have some things up our sleeves. Again, we want to give the community something to look forward to once this is all over, a space they can be proud to engage in. So more to come on that, hopefully. But yeah, and then I just kind of want to wrap up because I know I've been going on for a while. But as we continue to go through this, it is my belief and the belief of a lot of professionals in our field right now that the role of park districts is going to change. And the role of recreation and how we engage the community is going to change dramatically. And so we are, we are a sponge right now, absorbing as much information as we can, evaluating, you know, how we fit into this new norm for Macomb and how we can continue to make it an amazing place to work, eat, play, live, celebrate. And I can't, I cannot say thank you enough to the staff. Every day, I send them random webinars or trainings or articles. And they are just, again, they're sponges. They're excited to be part of our new change. And they've made this whole process a lot easier with their positivity. So we've got a really great team at the Macomb Park District, and I'm very thankful for them. And with that, that's the end of my report.
Comments or questions for the director? Something occurred to me while Director Lenz was speaking that perhaps I should have tied into the president's report. But Director Lenz alluded to it. I'm sure that all of you on the board are aware that the governor is holding the daily press conferences at 2:30. You can find summaries of those in a number of places. One that I would suggest to you as being definitely, I think, a cut above is capitalfacts.com. Not only is the curator of that blog a very experienced state political reporter, but a great many of the regular commentators on that blog are not your ordinary commentators. They're wired into state government and state politics. It is becoming clearer, and I'm, it's a question that's going to come to the director at the end of this. It's becoming clearer that there will be a, that the stay-at-home order will be extended well into, if not through, May. There will be some apparent modifications to the current order. But what those might be has not become entirely clear. There may be regional variations and all that. So the question for Director Lenz, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to it, but I'd like to get it out there. How prepared are we to go forward in those circumstances?
We've been planning for that since the beginning of April. We were under the impression that, and we remain under the impression that this is far from over. I believe at this point, I've encouraged our staff to. I believe at this point, I've encouraged our staff to look closer to July for us to start planning reopening. Should it come sooner, this is what we do. So I mean, we're always prepared to to work earlier rather than later. But yeah, at this time, that's that's kind of our our focus time with the understanding that this changes every day. And especially with what was discussed today during the press conference with Dr. Ezek from IDPA. You know, we're just, I think, like everybody else, taking it one day at a time, but it becomes a little bit clearer as they release little tidbits of information about what their expectations are for timeline.
I think I cannot pronounce her name, the director of the Illinois Department of Public Health. I'm getting at the age where I have trouble pronouncing my own age, my name. See, prove it. But apparently we are looking at a mid-May peak, which is later. So I think that all of us have a responsibility to work in support with Rachel and the staff. Personally, I think they're doing a heck of a job. I really do. There's a lot of creativity being displayed and I think the staff has got ahead of this as as much as anybody can. It's just going to have to stay that way. So as supportive as we can be as commissioners of Rachel and the team that she's got working for, I think that's going to be important. That's my commercial, but it's it's fact based. Russ was at a
Yes, John, I just want, I didn't see it or hear it in Rachel's report and I was going to put it down on the bottom of it for future items, but I want to be sure to address the issue of the softball leagues and the soccer leagues. And I don't want to assume too much, but it appears that those programs won't be running in May, the start or end of April. So Rachel, have you been reached out for contact with those different associations that normally would have spring sports on this, at the Veterans Park especially?
I I thank you for bringing that up. There was one point that I forgot to put on my agenda or my report and that was it. So the initial closures that were given, I think it was executive order 202010, where he told us that the governor directed us to close public amusement sites. We, I reached out to each of the leagues and just said until further notice, our sports facilities are closed. At this point, I'm ready to make contact with them again, but waiting for the specific adjustments to the order before I do. At this point, it would just be ifs, and so I'd much rather have document in hand and say, here's how we're, you know, encouraging or if the order would require it directing use sports. So at this point, I believe that they have all maintained a postponed season, but we'll we'll see what they say after the the new executive order comes out, which we do expect in a couple of days.
But June 1st is a hopeful time.
Pending the new executive order, yeah. I'll I'll be honest, I would be, I would be surprised if if groups larger than 10 were allowed by June 1st. But that is just, that is just my own personal opinion. That is not fact based. That's just me putting pieces together.
Thanks.
Yeah.
John?
Thank you. Any other questions for the director? Then we move to agenda item number eight, which is consideration of hiring Campfire Concepts to provide consulting services for the district's strategic planning process action possible. I believe you have each received a copy of the proposal from Campfire Concepts. And I'm sure that there are questions associated with that. Let me give you an idea of what is meant by action possible. We are not going to put the proposal up for final approval. What we want to get is your thoughts, your feedback on the concept that we would use these folks. They've given us a bit of a menu from which we can make some selections, thereby potentially reshaping costs, configuring the activity more to what we precisely want. So what I'd like to get is your initial reaction and either approval or disapproval to have Director Lenz, President Weiss and myself continue as we had previously and then go into very specific discussions with Campfire Concepts that we would then come back with a firm final proposal, possibly modified, reflecting what your views are and then bring it forward for approval for expenditure, the money, et cetera. Did did any of that sound like it was in English?
Yes.
Okay, so does anybody have any comments? And there will be, there's time for doing this, I think I need to add.
I do, John, but I would like to, if if Sterling or Emily would like to speak and share, they may repeat some of my concerns. I don't want to influence them. I have some things written down.
Cool. Commissioners, commissioners, it's your show right now.
I don't have any concerns. I think it's a great idea at the moment until I hear feedback, I guess.
Right. And that's kind of what we're trying to figure out is whether you think this is even worthwhile pursuing going forward with. Commissioner Edwards, have you got anything to add?
He might be frozen.
Okay, I would go ahead and jump in unless Sterling has something, wants to speak.
I temporarily lost my connection and it seems to be back up. I was getting a lot of lag time. I I have no comment officially on any of the campfire proposals right now.
All righty.
I will go ahead and just, I have it in front of me on my tablet here. And the work plan detail is listed out. And I think a lot of the marketing part of it with it focusing on planning, planning modules, models, that really caught my attention, the planning models that they have. So apparently, and I don't know how long these folks, I wasn't sure. Maybe you have the information, how long they've been advising other park districts? Because you gave us two names that would be leading the team and they had like a concept team reviewing approach to to their proposal, it seems like. So planning models, I'd like to little, know a little bit more about some of the ideas of of what I mean, because they went on and said park districts, your own size, interest that your community has, you know, other things, but I would like to kind of have a further discussion with Director Lenz about that. I thought that was really, it caught my eye. I'm always, as a treasurer, a little sensitive to the cost. Rachel and I did have a preview to the time that I had spent a little bit more time looking at the work plan detail. But there possibly could be some things cut out there that were already doing well. So that would reduce the overall cost of the project. I still am a little bit questioning under this COVID-19 period of what the time period and I think to be announced or to be to be determined was mentioned a lot in the initial proposal. So I'd like to, you know, because it highlighted in there about the public input to be determined of how that is going to look like in today's Zoom world. So, you know, those are some concerns that I would like to have a little bit more information about. All in all, though, I think anytime we can get expertise and new information from people that are in this for a living is a great, is good thing. I don't pretend to know everything about what goes on in parks and recreation. I'm most certainly not up to the most current stuff. I can only go historically of what's worked in our community, but I would always like us to move forward and and provide much and in this time, even maybe more importantly, using more virtual type of programs. So they may be, as part of their models, may have some of that already documented. So I do like the idea that at the end, they're going to provide us with a report, a summary report and also an executive report, which more detail. And I know that they're going to be reviewing our processes. And so I don't want to jump too much on the different modules that they had done, but I, you know, I would support it. I'm a little bit questionable on the costs and whether or not yeah, those can be negotiated, but it's not relatively. I don't know if if we can say what the projected costs are at this point that there is in their proposal. Is this for public information, Rachel, or not?
I mean, it's, yeah, it's no secret. It's not an official district document yet until it gets voted into.
Well, the proposal was less than, can I go ahead and say it was less than 10,000?
Yeah.
It was around there or less, so we're not looking.
You broke up there, Russ. Would you repeat the figure you used, please?
Well, it looked like around 9,000, but probably less than 10,000 or around that figure. Yep. It is what's in the proposal.
Yeah, if we choose to move forward with everything in the menu, yeah.
Right, correct. And that's all I have at this point.
Okay, thank you. Then if you, what I hearing is that the board is agreeable to President Weiss, Director Lenz and I continuing to refine our, in our negotiations with Campfire Concepts. I think the next step then would be a more firm negotiation and specification of what we want to have them do for us. And then to bring that back for the board's formal approval of of the expenditure. We have talked, the Director Lenz, President Weiss, myself have talked about meeting mid to late next week to begin our discussions so that if any of you have concerns, questions, direct them to to Rachel by that time and she'll make sure that they hit the table. We probably will have at least, I would say, probably two conversations with the principals at Campfire Concepts. Those will obviously be remote conversations and would basically take it from there. Does that meet with everybody's approval? Just a sort of general consent? I don't want to belabor it with formal motions if we don't have to. All right, then that's exactly what we will do. Thank you very much. We next, on item number nine, consideration of an IPRA slash PlayCor statewide grant application authorization with action possible. This falls into Director Lenz's bailiwick, so.
I will take it then. So as things seem to continue to happen with the COVID-19, we continue to encounter delays with this project. So before I get into the delay, IPRA for the third time in a row have partnered with PlayCor, which is a playground company that has three or four different play playground, park equipment, branches, Game Time being the one that we utilize most frequently. But they've partnered together to to develop a statewide funding and data collection initiative. And so what they have done is they've established guidelines for what they're calling national demonstration sites in several categories, adult fitness, inclusive play, nature grounds, pathways for play, a couple others, I can't remember. But there were two that that myself and Kara Sahagan, our development coordinator, we attended a training prior to COVID in Peoria and we we got a day's worth of just really rich information about the entire process and the funding available. We believe that that there is a lot of improvements and tender loving care that could be seen at Patton Park and that the pathways for play would really meet a certain need in our community for experiential play, nature education, the nature grounds, what those all, those elements seek to fulfill. And again, Patton Park is is one of our parks that needs the most tender loving care. So unfortunately, I hoped to present you guys with some numbers and some rough ideas of what we are working with Game Time to pursue. There was some miscommunication between Renee, our Game Time representative, and those who are working to get our project approved by the National Demonstration Site Committee and ourselves. So we last minute changed a few things around. Renee sent me an email at 5:30 saying, I'm so sorry, I tried my hardest. We were not able to get things wrapped up for you guys, so it's not complete. So with that being said, as it is completed with the new changes, I will, I will send that to you guys. And if need be, maybe we couldn't call a special meeting, seeing how it's a little bit easier right now for the five of us, six of us to get together. We could call a special meeting to discuss it, if that works for you guys. But again, apologize that it wasn't here earlier, but you know, Game Time is going through just as many changes as the rest of us, so.
Just for clarification on procedures on special meetings, they have to be called forty hour, eight hours notice and all that. But they have a restricted agenda. The purpose for which the meeting is called is the agenda item. So you do not need to worry about being trapped into a lengthy monologue about other kinds of of issues. We would get together and discuss that grant proposal idea, which presumably you would have documentation for in advance. Patton Park has been a sore point. Patton Park has been a sore point with the park district for some time. We simply have not had the funds to do what we would like to have done with our past planning and this may be encouraging, we'll see. Questions for the director?
I have no questions. I, Commissioner Edwards, just have a, a quick tech fact that I did have a lag during this session, three or four different times. There was lag and then I actually did lose my connection. I will make sure that it's not an equipment issue on my end, but that's the only comment that I have.
Okay, that's going to, that kind of information is going to be helpful, folks. If you're having trouble with this, please do let us know and we'll blame Phil because he's our board, the tech guy, right?
There you go.
We've got an, we've got an out for that. All right, then that leaves us with.
John? Joe's raised his hand.
Hi, Joe.
Hi, I, just as a point of order, going back to the beginning of this meeting, the postponement of a review and approval of the minutes from the March meeting, we probably need to have a motion to table review and approval of those minutes. To table, table until the May meeting.
Yeah, that's actually a new one in my experience. So let's take that as a point from our board attorney. The motion would be to table until the May meeting, the presentation and approval of the minutes from the board meeting of March. Would anybody care to make that motion?
So move, I would like to move that motion that you table the approval of the March February meeting minutes until the next May board meeting.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we have seconds all over the place. Excellent. We must be getting close to adjournment. All in favor, if you would say aye, raise those hands again so we can see it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion stands approved. Thank you, Joe. Good point. Open Commissioner Presentation, Discussion of Future Agenda Items. Russ?
I just want to make sure that each monthly meeting, we get an update from Rachel in regards to the spring sports, that the different associations such as soccer, softball, baseball, other programs, what each of those programs, where they stand, if we could, please.
Absolutely.
That's a fair request. And I see the director shaking her head.
Stand to.
Thanks.
Is there anything else? Then before calling for a motion on adjournment, let me say to each of you that I appreciate your chiming in with this and I hope things are going well and safely for all of you. And I think we can be pleased with the work that the district is doing and responding to this. I just hope everybody continues to stay well and I look forward to seeing you all in person at some point. So be well and is there a motion to adjourn?
One last comment to John, his, his background. I don't know where you've been all, the whole meeting, but you have been very colorful in your background. Thank you for providing us with that.
We have moved from Yellowstone National Park to Omaha Beach, Normandy, to Sunset in the Badlands in South Dakota.
Thank you. And I would like to move that we adjourned in the meeting.
Just second?
Second.
All right. And for those of you that are voting aye, you can raise your hands and wave goodbye. All in favor, please say aye. We stand adjourned. Good luck, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.